Okay, we're all ready to begin. Could I ask everybody to stand for the pledge, please?
(inaudible) to fly in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all for coming. Before we begin, could I ask you all to silence your cellphones if anybody's forgotten, please? This is a public hearing regarding road opening permit submitted by PSEG Long Island. And I'll read the brief synopsis of the permit. Application is hereby made by the undersigned firm or corporation, PSEG LI, New York Long Island Utilities Serv Co., LLC, to open an area and/or perform work in the Village Right Away located at King Street, Newtown Lane, McGurk Street, and part of Cooper Lane for the following purpose: to underground the transmission wires from pole number 50 up to pole number 76 on Cooper Lane. So before we begin, this is a public hearing as opposed to a public meeting, so there generally isn't a back and forth. We're here to listen to what you have to say as it pertains to this hearing. So if you have any other comments that you'd like to make, certainly after the meeting, we'd be glad to listen to those. And I would just remind you that the comments tonight should pertain just to this hearing that we're having tonight, all right? I think we had people sign in if they wanted to speak. There's not a lot of names on the signing list, but certainly everybody will be given a chance to speak. I would ask that you go up to the podium in order to speak, identify yourself by name and your address, and if you represent an organization or another person, to please let us know that. Each speaker would be allotted five minutes' time. Please, please address your comments to the board and not to the audience, direct them directly to us, please. I realize that for some, this may be an emotional situation, but please remember, most of us in this room tonight are all neighbors, so please treat each other the way you would like to be treated yourself. With that in mind, please observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So with that, we'll begin. Vinnie Frigaria, please, from PSEG Long Island.
(inaudible) copy the statement. I have one extra.
Yes, okay.
Good evening. My name is Vincent Frigaria. I am a district manager for PSEG Long Island handling Eastern Suffolk. I have a written statement that I'd like to read into the record. One second. Dear Deputy Mayor Lawler, as the acting mayor of the village of East Hampton, PSEG Long Island is writing to you as a courtesy in response to the village's invitation to provide information in connection with a planned project to underground a portion of a LIPA transmission line within the village. As you are aware, PSEG Long Island has agreed to the village's request for the benefit of the village and its residents to remove approximately 2,650 feet of the existing East Hampton to Amagansett overhead transmission line, install an underground transmission cable, and top the poles supporting the overhead distribution lines, which will remain in place. Just to clarify, topping the pole means we will cut off approximately five to seven feet off the top, install the transmission cable underground, cut it to approximately 18 inches above the existing distribution line. This will reduce the height of approximately 23 existing poles and provide a scenic benefit within the village. In addition, PSEG Long Island will remove two existing poles. Those are to the beginning of the project over near the Long Island Railroad tracks. In order for PSEG Long Island to construct the project, it is necessary to install a riser pole to connect the new underground transmission to the existing overhead line. A potential riser pole location was identified near 51 Cooper Lane, approximately 30 feet from the intersection with McGurk Street. PSEG Long Island inspected the site and determined that the location was suitable for its electric operations. This location was reviewed, inspected, and supported by the village, and thereafter, PSEG Long Island proceeded to engineer the project using that location. PSEG Long Island is committed to go forward with this project, which will benefit the village and its residents, once the village completes its process. However, the timeline for construction in 2020 is narrow. In this regard, PSEG Long Island is required to complete construction before the beginning of the summer season. However, before construction can begin, PSEG Long Island needs to procure the services of a contractor who will in turn have to mobilize its resources in order to commence construction. Should PSEG Long Island not be able to obtain the village's support to move forward with the current riser pole location by January 31, 2020, PSEG Long Island will have no alternative except to defer the project until next winter, 2020 to 2021, while an alternate riser pole location is designed and accepted by all parties. Accordingly, for work to commence, it is essential that the village timely inform PSEG Long Island that it has completed its process and is ready for the project construction to commence. Very truly yours, Margaret Keane, Managing Director and Vice President, Construction Operations Services. And that's the end of our speech. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Christopher Kelly, Toomey, Latham, Shay, Kelly, Dubin, and Corderaro, here on behalf of the interveners, Daniel and Yvonne Uvari, who live at 51 Cooper Lane. We're also here representing another 20 homeowners on Cooper Lane who own 15 different houses, and we've listed those folks in the memorandum of law that we've presented to you this evening. You're aware of the facts, but let's just review them real quickly. In 2013, LIPA, PSEG, decided to expand its transmission capacity between East Hampton and Amagansett to hook up between East Hampton Substation and the Amagansett Substation. Project was for 6.2 miles of poles, 267 wooden poles, and I think what happened at that time is that the poles ended up being a lot larger and scary-looking than what people had anticipated. In fact, they were the largest poles in the whole town, which incurred a lot of backlash, a lot of concern amongst a lot of people. In fact, there's litigation going on to this day between certain members of the public, the town of East Hampton as plaintiffs, and LIPA. As you recall, a significant objection was raised by certain homeowners, particularly in the McGurk Street corridor. The village, to try to help with this situation, entered into discussions with LIPA and PSEG to try to amend the project, modify the project, to mitigate the impact, the visual impact of these poles on McGurk Street, the McGurk Street corridor. The problem, however, was when the solution was developed to place underground the three high-tension wires that are placed at the top of these very tall wooden poles, is that under the current technology, which is a little hard to believe because we tend to think of ourselves as very vast in technology, in order to exit underground and proceed along above ground, you need a riser pole, as the gentleman just testified to. A riser pole is also known as a monster pole in some sectors. In fact, the utility itself calls it a monster pole. And this is what a monster pole looks like. We have one currently up by the railroad tracks, railroad station in East Hampton. This is what that monster pole will look like in front of the Uvari's house at 51 Cooper So apparently, the LIPA was willing to bury the lines, but only to a certain distance. And the problem is, they have not gone far enough to consider what reasonable alternatives there are to mitigate the damage to those on Cooper Lane. We've had some analysis done in terms of impact on property values to the Uvaris, and we've been told by several professionals that the impact on their value could be up to 20 percent, reduction, that is, a diminution in their property value due to the placement of this pole, which will loom over their house, casting a shadow over it and impacting their view shed. It not only affects, though, the Uvaris, it affects all the residents on that part of Cooper Lane. So the question is, can you do something to help mitigate the impact on the Uvaris, mitigate the impact on those property owners on Cooper Lane, and balance the interests of those who live on McGurk Street and those who live on Cooper? And I submit to you that you can. And I'm going to talk to you about a few things that make this application really premature at this time, and things that can be done to make it a better application and to mitigate the impacts of it. First, as you know, this is an application pursuant to Chapter 250 of the Village Code, and that was enacted, as was a subsequent town ordinance, and as well as state legislation, after the original project was proposed in 2013 and after it caused such an uproar. And in that chapter, the village board is given specific authority to review the location of poles and the locations where the road right-of-way may be dug up for the insertion of underground transmission lines. And specifically, the board is given the power to address the type and location of construction of structures, particularly to address public safety and welfare. So it is within your purview to look at the project as a whole and try to do the best you can in working with the applicant to reduce impacts. Now, clearly, it's unfortunate to have the interests of one street, the homeowners on one street, pitted against the homeowners on another. But there's a way to avoid that, I think, in this instance, and there are alternative locations. We have here analysis of alternative locations that were identified on site visits between LIPA's engineers and the Uvaris, and these alternatives are familiar to many of you that have studied this issue. But one alternative that has been rejected seemingly up to now, I think, was maybe prematurely rejected, and that is the location of the riser pole, placing it a few hundred yards down Cooper Lane to in front of Cedar Lawn Cemetery. My clients were told that the proposal to do that was run by the East Hampton Town Board, who wouldn't agree to it. But in the process of preparing for this hearing, I reviewed the town code and found no jurisdiction for the East Hampton Town Board to either permit or deny an application for a pole or for lines within the town right-of-way. There is one person in the town that does have the authority to approve that, and that's Steve Lynch, who is sitting here. He walked in here earlier. There he is. And he is the sole authority in the town that can approve the location of the pole in the town's right-of-way. Interestingly, he also lives on Cooper Lane. So I spoke to Steve, and he said, you know, I said, "There's an alternative here that solves the problem for the most part. It's not a perfect solution by any means, because it'll still result in a monster pole being located in a densely developed residential neighborhood, but what it does do is move it from somebody's backyard to in front of a cemetery where there are less people to complain about it." I asked Steve if he would be willing to entertain, as the superintendent of highways, with the power to approve such a project, would he entertain an application if it was made by the utility? He said he certainly was, and he's here to speak for himself tonight if need be. So I would urge you to ask the applicants to go back, consider alternatives, and make application to the town to see if a compromise location can be worked out. Now, there's some other technical reasons why this application is premature and should be denied, or at least, the very least, held in abeyance. First is the inadequacy of the SECR review. So when this original project was proposed in 2013, there was a secret analysis done by LIPA, and that was for the whole project. The problem is that SECR analysis is inadequate at this stage for two reasons. One, it never included, because it wasn't foreseen at that time, the amendment of the project to include the placement of underground utilities on McGurk Street and the creation of this riser pole, this monster pole, in front of the Uvari's house. But furthermore, the LIPA analysis didn't include, didn't acknowledge any involved agencies. And since that time, there are two, at least two involved agencies, which are you as the permitting entity under Chapter 250, also LIPA, which is a state agency, is an involved agency, but also the town in this instance, I would urge on you, is also an involved agency because they have the power through the superintendent of highways to approve one of the most logical and reasonable alternatives to the current location. So what does it mean when there's been no coordinated review of SECR amongst involved agencies, which is what happened in the initial instance, and when the project did not include what we're talking about here tonight? Well, that leaves it up to this board to make a determination of environmental significance under SECR. And the board, I understand, is prepared to do that once it has all the information. But there's one little catch here. First of all, because there are other agencies here, you have to determine, in conjunction with the other agencies, who's going to be the lead agency. But also, based on the new state statute that came in to effect in December of 2018, that determination of significance can't be made until LIPA completes a bunch of steps in terms of its own analysis of alternatives and the notification of not only municipalities, but affected property owners. And that gets me to the third point here, which is that the statute, Public Authorities' Law, Section 1020, which became effective in December of 2018, was specifically designed to help communities get advance notice of these types of projects. I believe it was proposed by our state assemblyman and state senator to address this type of project. And what it requires is that before any construction begins, that the utility do an analysis of alternative locations, do an environmental analysis of those potential locations, and also do a analysis of the pros and cons of each potential location, and an explanation to the public as to why they've selected a particular location for construction, why they think it's the best location. That analysis precedes SECR review, precedes the determination of significance under SECR, and is sent to all involved municipalities, the state legislators in the affected district, but also all utility customers within 500 feet of the proposed construction. So that is a step that has to be done by LIPA, to my understanding, that has not yet been done. My clients certainly haven't gotten such notice, and nobody's told us that they've gotten that type of notice. So that has to be done first by LIPA before this permit can be granted, before they can put a shovel in the ground. Whether they can do that by January 31st to meet their self-imposed deadline, I don't know if that can be done. But I think this board has to hold their feet to the fire and make sure they are complying with the law. Lastly, I would submit to you that the placement of this pole and its clear detriment to the neighborhood and the property values of the Uvaris and others is creation of a private nuisance. And if the village were to approve this as submitted, they would be aiding and abetting, if you will, the authorities' creation of this private nuisance and its impact on the neighborhood and on the Uvaris. So in conclusion, I would ask that you either deny this application or, at the very least, hold it in abeyance until alternatives are explored, the analysis and notification required by the Public Authorities' Law is completed, and proper SECR review is done. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have one question, and that is on this, the engineer's alternative sites. I trust that the location number three there in front of my house, I trust that tongue-in-cheek. I never said to anyone that I thought the pole was fine on Cooper Lane. I said to Dan that it should be moved down more towards the graveyard.
Okay, this is what he told me the conversation was with you, but he can address that. I think he wants to make a statement as well. There's also another possibility, which is to have each one of the single lines come out at a different pole along McGurk Street. You accomplish the same thing by getting them out of the ground, but you do it over three poles instead of one, and you don't have something then that looks like this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Uvari?
Hello? I feel like I'm in trouble here. Sorry. So I have, well, first, let me address your point, and then I'm going to have three points to make. Two points will be as the new group organizer of the people of Cooper Lane. I only recently found out the importance of being organized from our meeting the other day when we talked about the people of McGurk versus just Yvonne and I in the small group. So we reached out to everybody, and that's how we wound up with 20 people, and it's climbing every day, because we've just only recently reached out. We've only sent out letters and things. But first, let me address you. It's not meant as tongue-in-cheek, but it's also not meant as insulting in any way, or it's total respect. It might be a misunderstanding, but it's Yvonne in my understanding that Becky and you and I and Yvonne sat down, actually had two at least meetings. The first meeting was Becky and you and us separately, privately, where you were trying to basically convince us to take the pole in front of our home. And this was when you were saying, Becky and you were saying, you could put plantings in front of our home to mitigate the view of it and all of this stuff. And you were totally fine with having this pole on Cooper Lane. And then the second time was when the engineer was in, came to our home at 51 Cooper Lane, and again, this was in an effort to basically convince us that this is the only spot for this pole. And again, we talked about how to mitigate it and everything. And again, our perception of that conversation was that you were perfectly fine with having this pole on Cooper Lane. So this is why it says that. And if Yvonne and I, if Yvonne and I misunderstood your intention, I truly apologize. But up until this very moment, I totally thought that you were totally 100% fine with the pole being on Cooper Lane.
I appreciate your comment. And I, as you may remember, when we were walking around with the engineer that day, that I was the one that was talking to him about the three-pole solution, and that was what I told him was the best thing to do. And then we also talked about extending it down towards the graveyard.
Okay.
Okay. I was never in favor of putting it in your yard.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Again, it was to the extent that if that's the only thing LIPA could do, then that was the only thing LIPA could do, but that was a different conversation.
Okay, so it was...
And so, again, I apologize if I was not clear
Yeah.
...as to what my perception was of this, but...
Also, please understand that this is an incredibly emotionally charged situation for Yvonne and I, and when you're trying to give information to people, I mean, this home is our dream home. We bought this home from when we first got married. We came out here and vacationed in the Hamptons, and we always thought we would buy a home in the Hamptons. And in early 2000s, we bought this home. Then Yvonne wound up getting cancer and lost her left leg to cancer, and it was financially devastating, and we could not afford to keep the house, but we were able to rent it, to hold on to it. And then, so we were like, you know, struggling back, and then 2008 hit, it hit all of us, right? And so we just barely held on to this thing with our fingernails. And then finally, a couple of years ago, we were able to move out here. This is our home. This is where our driver's licenses are. This is where we live. And then this happens, and it's just devastating. This was our dream, and it's now become our nightmare. And any kind of conversation that we have in this, I mean, right now, I got to tell you, my heart's in my throat, my heart is pumping like crazy. I am, publicly speaking, is like a nightmare, and I'm forced to do this. Sorry. I'm forced to organize the people on Cooper Lane. I don't do that stuff. I'm a friendly neighbor. Any of you from McGurk see that I wave at you? That's what I do. I say hello and stuff, but I'm not like that person that goes and organizes. But anyway, I'm sorry. Just needed a glass of water. Okay. Okay. So anyway, I have three points. So again, so when we had that meeting, I realized the importance of organizing. So I reached out to everybody on Cooper, and I'm getting a lot of feedback, getting them every day, and everybody on Cooper is very, very concerned, and some are even outraged. And what they're concerned about is that they never even knew this was happening. They just have no information whatsoever. They're completely in the dark, and they're like, "How could this have happened? What's going on?" And when they find out that this has actually been going on for years, that there's been an organization like the people of McGurk and King, and talking with the trustees, and talking with PSEG, and all of this is going on, and nobody's ever said anything to Cooper, and that also, that the plan has been including to dump this thing onto Cooper Lane, they're all outraged. And I want to say that nobody on Cooper Lane, nobody on Cooper Lane, holds anything against McGurk. We all understand the pain that everybody on McGurk feels for these high-tension lines. We have those high-tension lines on Cooper, too. Nobody on Cooper wants those high-tension lines. We hate them. We want them gone, and we want them gone yesterday, okay? So in that case, we all are totally in the same exact line. But what happens is, we're all like, "Well, wait a second. What about us?" So we're going to keep the high-tension lines, and we're going to get this thing? And nobody said anything to us? And it's just being, "You're going to get it, and that's it?" So you can understand the frustration that everybody on Cooper has. So that's the first point I want to make. The second point, I'm just losing my mind here. So that's, yeah, oh, no, the first point was that nobody, that the first, I'm sorry. The first point was that nobody on Cooper has anything against the people on McGurk. We're all one community, and we want to stay one community, and we don't want this to like break us up and some people start hating each other. That's just crazy. Let's not have that. The second one was that they feel a little upset that they've been completely left out, and they want to be included, they want to delay this. They want to be able to come to the table and have a three-way conversation, the trustees, the people of Cooper, the people of McGurk, all four-way, and PSEG. We all want to be included. One of the things that, you know, when I tell people, the people of Cooper, what happened at the engineer came to my house, and I say, "Within 10 minutes, the engineer just went, did this, and he came up with four other options." You know, everyone says, "Well, what happens if we sat down at a table? How many other options would they be able to come up with?" They just, you know, that's the problem. We just don't know. And we don't know why the options were denied, so it's just an absence of information. And then the last, the third thing was a personal plea. So now I'm sort of stepping outside of the, I'm talking for the people of Cooper, and I'm talking personally. This is going to utterly destroy my personal ability, Yvonne and my personal ability to enjoy our home. If you look at our home, we have a little, I'm sorry, you can hear me, any, without these, right?
It's not for us, it's for the TV.
Right.
Oh.
The TV. And recording. So we had to make it worse, right?
So, anyway, this is my home. You can see, it's a small home, and it's a little postage stamp of a property. And this is, this ball here, this is where it's going. You can see the pole. It's going to overwhelm my property. This is only, it's like less than 20 feet to the only place, the only place I have on the outside of my property to enjoy. property to enjoy, the outside, to entertain people. It's a little patio, little brick patio, small. Those two windows there, that's my kitchen, that's my living room. I'll be looking out at this pole. This pole will invade the, the primary living space that I have on my property. You can't, I, I challenge anyone to go up King and, and McGurk and find a home more impacted by those high-tension lines, or more impacted if you put a pole in front of it. It's just, I'm the, I'm the, there is no home on the entire streets that's, that's more victimized by this. And, but I'm the one who's going to get the pole? It's, I, I'm just in this constant state of disbelief that this is happening to us. This is going to destroy our home. I, I just, I don't know what to say. I don't know what else to say. I just don't know what else to say. Please don't do this to us. Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify one thing. I just didn't want to have a back and forth here. We just, I was just in hearing what everybody says. But just to clarify one thing, to say that nobody knew anything about this is not true. Maybe you didn't because you rented your house, you weren't here. This was thoroughly publicized when it all began years ago. And there was a whole big to-do about the polls and everything. So to say that nobody knew about this is totally inaccurate. In other words, what I'm getting at is, the image here is that the board didn't do what we were supposed to do and publicize this. This, that couldn't be further from the truth. As I said, maybe you didn't know about it because you were renting your house and you weren't here, but this was thoroughly publicized in the papers and everywhere at the time that this whole thing started. So I, I just take exception to that, but I, I hear everything else you say.
You're talking about the news about when the lines first went in?
Yeah. And that, you know, and subsequent to that, when lines were going to be buried, that sort of thing. All of this was totally public. Anybody that wanted to know anything about it could have called Village Hall. They would have gotten all the information that we had. So, you know, we can't be expected to reach out to every single person that, you know, may have some issues. It's up to the public to, if they have an issue with something, and it's in our jurisdiction, to reach out to us as well. I think people have, you know, an obligation to do that. All I'm saying is, I don't want anybody out there to have the impression that this was not publicized. It was certainly publicized. And again, you, we're not a resident here. You rented your house. Maybe you didn't know about it. But this was thoroughly publicized at the time. So everybody that lives in that area should have known about it. That, that's all that I'm saying.
That location was publicized?
What are you talking about?
Location in front of his house was publicized?
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the whole thing. Well.
That's what we're here about, the location, not about.
Okay, okay. I'm just saying that the implication was that none of this was distributed to the people. It was. So let's, let's go back to what we're doing. Who's, who's next to speak is, I'm sorry, but I can't read the signature. Number three? I don't know who signed number three.
That's Lynn Brown.
Brown.
Oh, Lynn, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Lynn Brown. I'm a resident of McGurk Street, 53 McGurk Street. I have everything written down, so I wouldn't forget anything. Okay. I'm in a neighborhood of many monster poles. Six years ago, a large group of us from the East Hampton Village and East Hampton Town raised concerns and objected to the installation of high-tension lines throughout our neighborhoods. Our objection from day one was how grossly negligent the utility company and planners were to weave the power lines through narrow, narrow streets and village lots where children play and residents walk their pets. After six long years and many, many meetings, it was our, it was a relief to hear that PSEG and the East Hampton Village have agreed to bury these transmission lines, eliminating the fear that these lines could come down sometime in the future. As we all know, the East Hampton Village and PSEG are liable for the dangers that currently exist with the placement of these transmission lines. The utility company's original claim was that these transmission lines were installed to harden the electric grid throughout Long Island. East Hampton was among the first areas for such a project to be implemented. Maybe being among the first villages to have these lines constructed was why the project was so poorly planned. Yet, that is what happened. However, we know dangers exist with power lines, and that these lines can come down. California's largest utility, PG&E, was responsible for the 2018 campfire that killed 85 people and destroyed thousands of structures when power lines were downed in high winds and poor weather. The same can happen here. And let's be clear, if it does, we will hold the utility and all relevant parties responsible as well. So in closing, we are glad the East Hampton Village and PSEG have agreed to correct this part of the transmission line project in the most vulnerable neighborhoods. We also hope this is the first step to be taken, and that the East Hampton Town will join the effort and bury not only the riser pole in question on Cooper, but the entire transmission line project. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Torino?
Hi, good evening. I own two properties on Cooper Lane, number 22 and number 20, and I've been there for 30 years. This, I just found out about this today, and I, I don't think it was that well-publicized. And I, I think it, it seems very rushed and aggressive to me. I, I didn't know there was a deadline. I don't understand why there's a deadline involved here. And plus, these riser poles, monster poles, don't belong in a tight residential space like Cooper Lane or McGurk Street. These are, these are mini parks now with a lot of pedestrians walking their, their pets and families in the area. It's the home of the annual Halloween celebration for a lot of reasons. I don't think any riser poles should, should be introduced to this area. And that if the project proceeds, it should all be underground. So I would implore you to, to defer this and to analyze it. And, and I'd like more disclosure about the utility situation in, in the entire neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Virginia Hessler?
Hello, everyone. My name is Virginia Hessler. I just have a couple notes. I'm a resident of McGurk Street, and we've been dealing with this problem for six years. Six years, we've had high-tension wires in front of our house, which we did not want there. At that time, you may say that we had advance notice. This is advance notice. This is a picture of what it's going to look like. But we didn't have that advantage. We were told, don't worry, it's the same poles, it'll just be extra line. Nothing to worry about here. And what was done, was done to us beyond, beyond anyone's imagination that lived there. I don't suppose that anyone on McGurk, or Cooper, or anywhere else in East Hampton Village would want this in front of their house. Yet, we have been living with it for six years. This is more of a crowd that I've seen because on McGurk, we're just a small little neighborhood. I, and I apologize for any kind, this is horrible. It's all horrible. But we didn't see the residents of Cooper coming over to McGurk Street help us out. Not that, I'm not saying that anyone is at fault here. It's the power company that has gotten their way. When I noticed the trees that are down, month after month, monster trees down in front of, on Newtown Lane, big one on McGurk, because they split it in half. Oh, well, now we got to take the tree down. Every month, it's like more and more invasive. Okay? This is a health concern. I am depending on my local government and other residents of this town and village to help us to fight, to make this not be a health concern. With high-tension wires running, we can't even pass a car. If somebody is parked on the street, there's no two-way traffic. Cooper has a double yellow. I'm not saying it should go on Cooper either, but we are in a tight, tight street. And yet, that's where they were. That's where they are. It's encouraging to me that at least there is some agreement as to what, a plan to move forward to get them out of our faces, these high-tension wires. So I am encouraged about that. It's unfortunate that they have to make another problem by damaging someone else's property values, just like ours that are affected. So I am encouraged. I would like this project to move forward. I do think there is probably a better solution where no one has to face this, or no one has to face the high-tension wires in regards to health concerns and in regards to the picturesque village, where it's, you can't even hang a sign if it's not the right size and everything else. But you can put these things up. I don't understand how that works. But anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please just give us your name and address, and the mic.
Chris Corwin, 25 Cooper Lane.
Thank you.
I agree with most of what everyone has said so far. This is not Cooper versus McGurk. This, this is very ugly. And I can't mow my lawn on a weekend. I can't change a lightbulb without a permit or some kind of board review. The trees are getting cut down, but this is going to go up. It doesn't, doesn't fit what the goal of all these other regulations are. So you work for us. I hope that everyone here sees and feels what we feel, because no one here on either street wants to look at that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Hi, Larry Kane, no longer of Cooper. Live on Palmeterus. And I got some calls tonight from some people. Can you come down for a megapol? And I'm used to being in East Hampton Village where a lot of things get blown out of proportion. I am very glad I came down here. This is outrageous. For this to be on Cooper Lane is unspeakable. I don't think anything more needs to be said. PSENG should save our money, and they should go all the way to the substation in Amagansett, put the riser over there, and be done with it.
Hello, James Amadon, resident of 27 Cooper Lane. I think a lot has already been said. I don't need to reiterate because, as Mr. Kane said before me, I do agree with a lot of what everybody else said before. But I think it really comes down to, the Village Board is, has always been there to keep East Hampton beautiful. There are regulations and restrictions that have to be in place. But this, again, everybody's pointing to it. It totally goes against what you have already done up to this point. This, to me, would be setting a new precedent for what can be done going forward. And if this is not delayed for further review, it's going to be really scary what could happen using this as a precedent in the narrow lanes of the village. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Alan Court, 63 McGurk, two doors away from my neighbor, who I always thought was a McGurk address, but I'll accept that you're a Cooper address. When, when the polls first went up, we heard things like, oh, well, we told you all. You got notices. I don't know why you didn't complain to the village. Nobody on McGurk Street. And I talked to all my neighbors, and I live there year-round, so I'm not a weekender, or every, or once a month. Nobody knew there were going to be poles until there were poles, until all the trees were destroyed. I remember saying to my neighbors, you know, where's the LVIS? I mean, who are, you know, we've all contributed to them, or any of the other groups that care about the look of the street. And as bad as it is on McGurk, and, and as, as bad as the trees that were knocked down and destroyed, King Street is despicable. I would say the only thing as bad as that, and I feel for my neighbor, as bad as that was the destruction of King Street. If I had a house on King Street, and I had enough money to create lawsuits, I would be all over that, because I think it was wrecked by PSENG. And I even remember asking at one of the meetings, can it go, like, you already have the, all these poles on the railroad tracks? Can it go, oh, no, it can't go there because if one of those get knocked down, we have to have an alternative route. And I'm thinking to myself, well, if one of those got, gets knocked down, God forbid, you could fix that one. It doesn't mean there have, has to be, I don't know, are there, are there 500 poles down in Amagansett? Are all these trees destroyed? I don't know why that couldn't happen. We asked them, well, couldn't you do it underground at the railroad tracks? And I don't know what, I don't remember what they said, because it was so many years ago. So when I look at that, I can't help but wonder, is that really the only thing? Is that, is that the best it can look like? I heard something about three poles. Three poles, as it happens, I'll, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll take, I'll take it personally. One of the three poles would be in front of my house. So, yeah, it bothers me. I think the fourth pole is past my house. But even if it was my neighbor's house, it would bother me, like it bothers me about this. I have a vested interest in the, in the lines being buried. I do. It's personal. I do. It matters to me. I've found those poles disgusting, the ones that are up now. And I, and every year, they destroy more trees. They make our block less and less, more and more horrible. And I think that's horrible. But I'm just curious. I mean, do we just accept that that's what it looks like? I mean, does it have to look like that? I mean, could it be different? Could it be less obnoxious, less horrendous? I don't know the answer to that, but maybe that's one question that could be asked, rather than moving it here, moving it there. As much as I'd like it in front of the cemetery, I think that was the first conversation we had together. I said, you know, can't it be in front of the cemetery? But anyway, even if it is, I don't know that it has to look like that. Does anybody know that it has to look like that? And that would be my question.
Thank you. Steve, did you want to?
Hey, good evening. Jerry Larson, candidate for mayor, Village of East Hampton. First of all, this should have never happened on McGurk Street and King Street. I think we all agree with that now. But this, this is a mess going up on, on Cooper. We're just moving the problem. I think the board needs to go back to PSENG, and we need to work a little harder, and we need to bury the entire project, not just the three top lines. Bury it all. I've talked to many people on, on McGurk Street, and they agree, they're just settling for this, because they think it's the best deal they'll ever get, because they've been suffering for six years. We need to go back, and we need to make a better deal. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Lynch. I'm Cooper Lane resident, 18 Cooper Lane. I didn't realize there was a transition poll going up. The first I heard about it, Chris called me on Friday, and I talked to the mayor. I, I think there has to be a better way. You know, we're willing to sit down, and let's go over and see what we can come up with, because I have one of these polls in front of, two of these polls in front of my commercial property on King Street. And, you know, it's everything but attractive. And in front of my house, I would not be happy for anybody, and I don't think it belongs there. So I know there's other options, and I think everybody has to sit down at the table, and we have to go over it. But for now, I, I, you can't put this in front of these people's house.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John Garing, 39 McGurk Street. And just to back it up, we were the group that started it, like you're doing now. But there was a lot of meetings. We met at the town hall. We did everything. My daughter and I even walked the railroad tracks from East Hampton all the way to the point in Amagansett where they're going. And they counted out the number of bridges you had to cross, et cetera. Did a lot of, there's a lot of people put a lot of time in. But I agree with, I want, I don't want the lines at all. But I sure as hell wouldn't want that. I'd buy myself a chainsaw. I could cut metal, but he. I'd buy myself a chainsaw, I could cut metal, buddy. No, that's sad. You know, I know you guys worked hard, Ricky and Barbara and everyone, and it's just not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else? Okay.
There's someone right there.
Go ahead, Chris, sure.
My name is Christine Winter and I live at 46 Cooper Lane, which is across from Dan's. And I received a letter from him about a year ago and it's the first time I had heard about it. And, and I was, I totally respect both sides of the story, King and McGurk, but I just agree with everybody here in that that is just awful. I mean, it's just not an answer to this solution. It is not. And I would, I wrote a letter to the board today and I asked for them to protect us as a community and to respect our, and work for us, for our investments and for the whole area of Cooper Lane and everybody. There's gotta be a better solution. And I ask the board, as everybody else, to go back and come up with a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, June, could you just give us a tally of what communications we got in favor and against the poll, please?
Twenty-two emails opposing the underground transmission pole. We got five emails supporting the burying of the transmission lines, but no reference of the installation of the pole on Cooper.
Okay, that's it? All right, thank you very much. Those will be made a part of the record, so if anybody wants to take a look at those, they could come to Village Hall or ask Becky, I'm sure that she'd make them available for you. So at this point, if there's nobody else that wants to speak, I would like to close the hearing, but hold the record open until the end of business on January 27th, which is Wednesday, right? Becky, is that, that's Wednesday, 27th, I think?
I believe it's the 29th. Monday is the 27th, Wednesday is the 29th.
Okay, the 29th, I'm sorry. So we'll, we'll hold the record open till the 29th. Anybody wants to submit remarks about this, they'll be able to do it up until the close of business on the 29th. So that being said, do I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, hearing is closed. Thank you very much for coming.